All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just I think it's important, she is actually taking a position, so she's moving forward.
Looking for a motion to approve the proposed SMHS science teacher twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
I'd like a motion to approve the proposed SMHS science teacher for twenty twenty-three twenty-four.
Well, seconded.
Yes, there are any comments?
John, anything else?
Uh, really strong applicant pool, so very strong applicant pool. Which is nice in these times, science can be one, so this, you know, replaces Mr. Acquino's position. We interviewed five, uh, at the five we interviewed, yeah, really, really felt very comfortable with hiring four of the five. Had an interview committee of five people and then over the course of a few days, um, so very pleased with the time.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approve the proposed SMHS extracurricular positions twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
Which ones, which one did you ask for?
Uh, the approved proposed SMHS extracurricular position twenty twenty-three twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed SMHS extracurricular positions for twenty twenty-three twenty-four.
One second.
Second.
Just we try to get this done now, this time of year because of some things that happened, it's been a lot of disappointment for the summer programs. And obviously you can see we're still looking for some key people.
Yeah, I was gonna.
There are a lot of gaps.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is like, kind of a first in my tenure here, to see this many gaps. Do we have any concerns about being able to fill the roles?
So I know we have a few different candidates that were, that have an interest in, we're interested in varsity boys soccer. Typically, once that gets positioned up, the JV positions may fall into place as well.
Are you finding that you're having to go outside of the staff to fill these roles?
A lot more.
Okay, is that just an indication of what the staff are willing or really not, not willing to do as far as the extracurricular support? That's probably a tricky question.
Uh, I think that Sean, Sean Wayne as well, but I think that it's a two, it's a two-pronged thing. One, um, so it's a, it's not a whole lot of money. It could potentially be a, a whole lot of issues. And we also have very high expectations for our teachers. And, and if you can't get it right in the classroom, that's your priority, and we want it right in the classroom. John, you want it?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, it's increasingly difficult, right, so there's, there's.
The coaching.
The coaching, well, yeah, even, even teaching positions are tougher as well. And again, we're very pleasantly surprised with the following of the science candidates, but it, it's a lot. You know, I think it's certainly something that bears watching when we do our next contract. And when we, you know, when we're looking at those co-curricular positions, they are part of the contract. The, the raises have been, have been appropriate. You're just getting to a place where, you know, the expectations are high everywhere, um, it's a, it's a lot. You know, and so I think you just have people who, you know, that've done it for ten or fifteen years sometimes and, and, uh, you know, speaking myself, I've done sports and I almost didn't want to spring them, you know, I just keep shaking my head going, do I really wanna put that time and energy into it, so. As a challenge.
How do we advertise for these positions?
So, they're on, you know, website, they're from the local papers, uh, trying to get, see the intertown, or into the shop car. Um, it may be, you know, a lot of this happens by really Sean, other folks, other administrators. Hey, I heard so-and-so might be interested in, in Tom may reach out, or Sean may reach out, or Negan may reach out. So it's a lot of work I've got to work on.
We'll start with the advertising.
Or we'll just start with.
And then we go, and then we go the arcturous thing, the advertising just doesn't come out that much, then we start to, to really start to work our networking at that point.
Do you think it's the time commitment or money thing, or?
I think it's a lot of things. I think it, you know, it's, it's the time, it's the money, it's the, um, it's the expectation, you know. I think Mr. Holden put it well as well, we have high expectations, but people have high expectations of themselves as well, right, so it's a piece where, you know, when they do something, they wanna make sure that they do it right. And so, to do something right, you know, I'll use soccer as a good example, you're gonna run a summer program. You're gonna be practicing every day, you're gonna do some extra things in addition to that. Um, whether it's taking kids to keen soccer camp, or, you know, just along those lines. You know, if you go to basketball, um, a lot of times you're gonna take them to a holiday tournament, they're gonna, they're gonna do a summer program as well. So there's just a lot, a lot to it, and it's not, it's not anything that we're not seeing in, in lots of places. I can't even begin to tell you the problem, they're having time and officials.
Sure.
You know, so, um, just, you know, they're flat-out canceling games in sports because they couldn't find any officials.
Um, I, I coached all the way through my time at Windsor, five years, and as Sean shared, as the expectations have become more and more on teachers, uh, probably at this point in my career, if I was still teaching, I probably would be less likely to coach just the demands for professional development and constant growth. The, what we ask teachers to do, the hours they're putting in, and how hard teachers generally are speaking on themselves to deliver, day in and day out. I think that also, one thing that plays into it is just speaking from, I did it before I had children. And one of the things I know is that actually the same year I stopped coaching has also birthed my son. It's a big expectation if you have a young family. We have a veteran staff, they have kids, it's a, it's a, they have to balance. So I think that, that's something that comes with a veteran staff, uh, people that have families and such.
With that said, we'll have all the coaches on.
I wanted to, so, May, typically I would give this to you in June, and then we bring it back, obviously in August. And in August you'd see, um, you know, maybe we don't have enough kids to even have a JV soccer team, like, a girl soccer.
Or a breast coaching.
Or, or Miles might be coaching, or, or Ed might be coaching. Um, and then because of Chris and Ryan, or John Vee's picking up. But so, I know, it looks, it looks like we've got all those gaps, but based upon knowing we have these people in place, and I may need to make sure that these people get their summer programs going, I wanted to just get this rolling.
And a couple of these dominoes, I would say, are articles, so we're, we're already, if we were in a meeting in two weeks, we would have some of this.
Take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move back to the motion for the approval of the proposed Goshen tuition agreement twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four. I'll make a motion to approve the Goshen tuition agreement for next year.
One second then?
So, we've been together for a couple of years now, um, Kevin and I noticed a couple of edits that we're gonna make in there. This is in number three, we, we typically don't set, uh, achieve the number four, we didn't set, uh, tuition rate in November, we set it in May, so we'll make that edit. But other than that, this is very typical document, it was a negotiation last month.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the last, looking for a motion to approve the proposed district strategic plan and action steps.
I'll make a motion to approve the district's strategic plan and action steps.
Here's, one second then?
So, Kerry, you shared, you shared notice, I believe, Amanda, you shared as a community member at that time. We did some great work, uh, months ago with Colorado from Primex, looking at doing a SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. And, and really what came out of that, folks remember the, at the, I believe it was in January, we gave you an update of our final, our last strategic plan, which was a five-year piece, uh, and two and a half, now three of those years were right from COVID. But we still were managed to get, I believe it was eighty-plus, a sign of our, of our, of our commitment to that strategic plan. Looking at strategic planning moving forward, uh, a lot of companies and a lot of folks are saying, man, like, five years is a long time in the world that moves so quickly. Let's back it up a little bit, let's think about the things that are in front of us that we really wanna go after, and really make a difference to that we can be effective and focused on. And so through that process, we've identified, um, some of those, the goals that are, that are on the paper here. Uh, and then I asked our departments to go and think about those goals and how would they, what would they do for action steps to help us achieve those goals. And so that's what's in that, in, in your pocket, you have one from a district perspective, each school has a perspective, special ed has a perspective, technology has a perspective, and that kitchen actually is their own perspective, which I thought was really great, because that actually has a lot to do with some of the CIP stuff that we're doing as well. So we're gonna work on this for the next, probably eighteen to twenty, twenty-four months. Really accept parent engagement, making sure we're offering that curriculum and retaining the folks that are here. And I think we felt the whole, we're keeping the baby with the bathwater. And it's just, I think, a much better way for us to focus our energies moving forward, and we'll continue to report back on this year, I think, well, I should say within, probably six months, six months.
So I actually, um, I kinda struggle with this relative to what we had before for a strategic plan. Like, when you look at how the old one was done, and sort of written up as far as the measurable actions and outcomes, I feel like that was a lot more intuitive to be able to look through and, and see what the actual actions were. This, to me, is really confusing, I thought. Um, the Primex piece of it especially, because I don't really feel like some of it actually reflects actions and, and, and goals. Um, and there's pieces that looked to be missing, that are sort of like some TBDs that are left in there. So I, I kind of, like, I know that we went through the whole Primex acts, um, activity and stuff, which was pretty short and condensed, in my view, like, in my experience, like, the SWOT analysis I felt was actually really good and helpful, but when I have done these exercises before, they're actually take quite a bit of time. And it felt very rushed and condensed to me, the way that we were divided into groups, and one group focused on only this, but the input from the rest of the other groups was not sort of factored in. So I kind of was expecting that we would have, that, that the takeaway from that would have been to sort of evaluate, bring it maybe to a work stream of people within the district that would sort of vet that more into more tangible and measurable actions. So, that's just, that's my feedback, I mean, I'm, you know, this is not my expertise by any means, but I, I find it really confusing to follow through the Primex section and then all the different other pieces that follow it. It's difficult to follow, I thought.
So I think the Primex section really is a standalone to itself. So what I've asked, what I should do is to build up the three goals, right, the building, building grounds, improvements in student safety, instructional programs, and then community engagement, instead of then, those action steps, if you will, those action sort of targets, or they, either I've identified or I believe have been identified underneath there. I think the measurable piece, I would agree, it's not, we're gonna get, you know, so-and-so, I'm, we're gonna do a survey every six months, we're gonna eighty percent compliant with these. But I think, I, I think we had those, uh, to some degree we had those in our other plan, but they might have been almost too microscopic, because we just focused in on a survey instead of maybe a larger piece of how we truly engage in more of our entire community, using that as a intent.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I guess, just, for me, it was, it was a lot easier to go through.
Yeah, so it's definitely a different process, right, I, I don't disagree, so it's, this would've been the first time I'm going through this process as well.
Yeah.
I mean, I went through, went through my association, and it is definitely different to, from the traditional strategic planning, where you're saying, okay, blah, 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 blah. But I think there's a piece where I know, again, using it through my association, it's, it's almost, so we refer to it all constantly. So it's always going back, always going back, so what do we tie, this is going back to, to goal one, we're going back to goal two here. How are we doing our engagement, how are we doing with our, whatever it may be? Where I think the, in my mind, the bigger plan was, okay, we're gonna do this one thing, and then we're gonna cross that off. Where this is always trying to tie everything back to these three, three areas.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, just, again, it's just my interpretation, right? Like, I feel like the other one was a lot more robust, and it tied everything back to the vision of the graduate and the mission of the district, which I feel is kind of not here, so it's, I don't know, like, if those have been looked at and reevaluated, and they tie specifically to what we've established this go-around? But, but again, I wanna make it, that's all.
Yeah, the vision of graduate wasn't there when we created that strategic, that last strategic plan. Yeah, I, I don't, I think everything fits together, I think it always fits together, I think we're gonna keep the engagement. But the vision of graduate also stands on its own as far as what it is, what it's gonna have kids to do, and be able to do for the next. I think anything that we identify is helping, whether it's in special ed, whether it's in graduate, um, whether it's through, through compliance through business, through the business administration office, whether it's compliance through, um, our policies, I think it all sort of filters back down. Uh, it is different, Kerry, I'll give you that.
Why did we change format?
Um, well, because we spent a whole lot of money on something that was five years, that we felt, by the time we got through it, was a little bit outdated, and we got through it. And this was more of a format that is being used more systematically now, like eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-month, and so that's why we went in that direction.
And I think to your point, 'cause I was there too, like you said, is it was, um, it was a great start, and it almost felt like if we could've done it one more time and just narrowed down on everything that was talked, and maybe even looked at this kind of next step that you guys did. Um, and I think maybe part of it is just checking back in more frequently, to your point, you know, if it's only eighteen to twenty-four months, it's not very long. So, maybe it's not, let's meet in six months, let's, let's look at it in three, or whatever that translates to.
I think when I went through it, I, uh, the thing I thought about a number of times was just, hopefully, you know, getting creative as far as pulling in community. And parents, especially parents of, you know, the younger kids, is the thing that's made this work so well over the years, I think, is just people wearing multiple hats, uh, going above and beyond, you know, a lot of people in the street, you know, have been a part of that, obviously. You know, sorry, I'm, um, you know, more, more of the younger families, you know, they're coming to this because, uh, you know, it's gonna be more of a high risk in the future, and also less of older kids, so, that's gonna be a key thing, just really, you know, we're, we're obvious people, you know.
The community, and I, that really was, I think that community engagement piece was a, a really big piece, everyone, uh, you know, you spoke, you actually said so that on the table, as a, as a good family.
Right.
Right to our community.
Yeah, and I think it's so important to help everybody find their place, and how do they help? You know, I'm thinking about your coaches, you don't want me to coach soccer, that'd be a disaster, but I can send an email, you know, I can, and I think that's a big piece of coaching, is all of the logistical parts, and how does, how do we figure out how to parse some of this stuff out a little bit to lighten the load? And I thought that's kind of what we talked about that day, of like, as a district, these are the three big things. So every decision we make should answer these three in some way, shape, or form, so to keep us on track and gets us moving.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four support staff. Oh, I'm sorry. For a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four SAU.
You have, you have, you have a motion with Kerry, and seconded by Andy.
Thank you. Those are my, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? All right. Moving on to the information items, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, SAU personnel and directors.
So this, this information, uh, again, you approve the teachers' annual meeting, as you need to by, by law. Uh, I'm just letting you know, these are folks that we are going to be bringing back in the roles that they currently are serving within our.
Any questions or concerns?
So that would then, SAU and, uh, support staff in this one, in the same time.
All right, uh, looking at the SCES project update.
So we had a, we had a CIP meeting, um, this week, and finally, we got a silo roof, which was long awaited. Yeah, I did, um, actually send Brian, their project manager, once or not twice down to Kentucky to push the roof through. So they were very proactive in it. We're hoping to fire the unit up this week and get some data on it, uh, especially for the state, for, uh, for our grant. The project's really coming, you know, getting wrapped up, we gotta do a final walkthrough, I think it's next week. Next week or the rest of the week after?
We're done on the sixteenth, and then we are beginning the twenty-fourth.
Yep, so, uh, we're gonna do a final walkthrough, make sure all the punchline items are done. We do have a couple of things that won't be done by then, one is a fire panel, we're in compliance, but it's just not available. We, we just can't get a new fire, uh, audio panel. We are, there's no safe, we're in compliance, there's no safety issues, the, the, you know, everything is fine, but we're just missing one component. One of the HVAC units needs to be balanced, still, uh, we gotta remove the old portable, which we can't do until the end of the school year. And then, we're still, so we, they, they replaced all the lights in the elementary school with LEDs. Uh, we're still missing a hundred and thirty volts, uh, they just haven't come in, so. But hopefully, everything else, we do our final walkthrough, all the paint, holes, ceilings, all that stuff is done, so that we can, we can sign off on it. And then, we did, at that meeting, uh, we did talk, uh, a lot about future projects. We have a lot of things on the docket, we should have a lot more information for you at next meeting. But, you know, like, sneak peek, we wanna try to get the vestibule done. Matt did some good work, got some, a good quote on some windows, so that, uh, in the lower level, they can, uh, we can still use that grant money and put the ballistic shield, the coating on it, um, instead of putting them on old windows and having to take them out and redo it, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll be able to get that done this summer. The paving project, we gotta move some playgrounds around because of the paving project, so there's a lot of, a lot of things we'll be talking about at next month's meeting, but that's kind of what's on our, what's on our plan, on our, on our docket.
Just pretty exciting, 'cause I think those, those three things that Andy just described are gonna really address some key safety issues that weren't done with the, you know, with what we just accomplished, so.
Twenty twenty-four federal general assurance DOE.
So, a few years ago, the Department of Education made a determination that we needed to ensure that our board has gone through this very lengthy document, and had an opportunity to read it. Uh, this is, this says if I misuse any funds, and I'm responsible for these funds, that I'm held and pretty highly, um, content of these funds, and we need to use them for the right reasons, and different federal and laws and whatnot, therein, yeah, they have to be initialed by the board chair, initialed by myself, signed, signed, and then given to the Department of Education and uploaded to our banks. So, you've had them, hopefully, you've, you've read them, or at least taken a look at them. Uh, you can ask questions, I will do my best to answer them, I'm not sure I can tell you I have all the answers to them. It is a compliance document.
I do not have any questions. Uh, looking at a resignation from the adjustment counselor.
So unfortunately, um, we have been so fortunate to have Cindy with us for seven years now, I think, six years? She, she has just done tremendous work here for our district. She came and spoke with me earlier in the year, and talked about wanting to open private practice, and it's something that she's had aspirations to do, and sort of her goal, and she feels like it's time in her life to be able to do that. She's been doing this type of work for twenty-plus years, and, and I can only imagine it doesn't get any easier, day after day after day, and I'm sure it gets, um, heavy at times, um, when there's just a lot of unfortunate issues and negativity, um, that you're dealing with, and you're trying to do that support and help, but there's just a lot that comes with that, so I'm sure it hits its toll. So unfortunately, Cindy moving on, we have had, because of passing in the budget, we had already had an ad out, looking for an adjustment counselor. Uh, we've had a couple applicants, we have, actually have interviews set up for next week, so instead of now looking for one, we're potentially looking for two, or looking to be creative with some folks that we may have in district that can help pick up some of this slack. So, it's a, definitely a loss for us.
Thank you for coming.
So, Russ, I don't know if it's a fair ask or not, since she's not gonna be here much longer, but I think from, it would be really helpful if she came to the next board meeting, just to talk about, 'cause she, she came and talked to us when she was really early on in this role, and it was a brand-new role. It would be really nice to kind of get that download from her about what she's been doing, whether she's got any data to share, I don't know, but just to give us some of those insights, I think she's at probably a pretty high bar for what we're looking for, so it might be nice to just kind of get that from her.
Certainly get her to, and she's got a ton of data, that, well, some of it'll make your head spin, but there's a lot of, a lot of data, I'm sure we can do that, good, good idea.
And how the roles evolved from where we started.
Moving on to our conversation with, uh, Croydon, um, district that we had yesterday, I don't know if you'd like to highlight it, like. Um, so Croydon came to us looking to see if we would, um, I'm gonna lose the word here, what the main school is, the, uh.
Anchor School?
Anchor School, thank you. Uh, possibly being an anchor school, we met with their superintendent, uh, their school board chair, and I didn't get the title yet.
Business, business.
The business administration. We spent some time, and one of the things that jumped out onto me is, um, it seems like a lot of their community likes what Sunapee school has to offer, um, and I think one of the reasons that some of the students have been held back from coming is because of busing. So if we were to become an anchor school, uh, for Croydon, we discussed, uh, potentially, um, providing a bus that would go into Croydon. I'm familiar with this in town of Goshen, Newport will send a bus to the main point, so they meet at the fire and police department in the town of Goshen, and pick up all the students there, so they're not running a full route, and then come back over, um, and they feel that this, this could definitely add more students coming in, which would be a benefit to us. And looking at the numbers, I think if, if the whole group was like fifty kids, but we don't get those.
Right now, they have fifty kids that are tuitioning, they have seven kids coming out of fourth grade. So those fifty kids right now are in other, other schools, they actually have, I believe they said four, not five, anchor schools. So we would be their primary anchor school, they have, um, Newport, Clamhot, I believe Montessori, I believe Mount Royal, and then I think we would be their, their anchor. And really what they're looking to do is give up, give their kids choice and option. So I asked them what the benefit was, like, why us? And they said, well, again, we wanna give an option, but there's a potential there for them as well to save money. So our tuition, we've talked about tuition a lot, the fact that we have a, a tuition that we set at sixteen thousand for high school, and one of fifteen-five or fifteen for, for K eight, um, where Newport's charging them eighteen. And so, if they have to budget all their kids at the highest number, which is eighteen, but if all fifty kids didn't go to Newport, and twenty-five remain at Sunapee, they're saving three grand a kid. And once those kids are in Sunapee, then they can go ahead and adjust their budget. And we're talking about a town that has, you know, less than a hundred kids, K through twelve, and a hundred thousand dollars is a whole lot of money to probably raise locally, and where they can look to save and cut, so there's a financial piece for them as well. Special ed was a big conversation, right now, we have, and we would like to continue to keep, uh, sort of menu or cafeteria option. That actually, I think, works well for them, um, where if they have services that they need us to provide, we build them back for those services outside of the tuition itself. So if they need a one-on-one power, we build them back, we hire that power, we build them back for that power, they pay for that power on top of the tuition. What's gonna happen from here, they would like this to happen relatively quickly, they're, they're really interested. They're gonna send us a, a contract, Tara and I are gonna review it, um, we'll make some edits and changes, and we'll potentially bring that to you if we feel like we're in a good place to do that in June. I had a conversation with Brenda to see if she's interested in what that potential transportation looks like. We had, we had very open conversations, I can't send a bus for a kid, you know, how many kids do I need to send a bus, and I gotta talk to Brenda about that. And then, you know, like Ed said, do we go to Goshen, and that's where it starts at six o'clock in Goshen. and Goshen kids are on a bus maybe for fifty minutes, because they're the first stop, so we don't disrupt any kids coming back into Sonopee, but it's en route coming back to the schools. There were some definite things that they're willing to be flexible on. They, they know that our, their town recognizes that our school has academic expectations for kids and great opportunities for kids. They don't feel that their fifty kids are out there that we're gonna get an onslaught of forty-nine of those fifty kids. Most of those kids are in a placement, they're gonna stay in those placements. There may be some, as Ed said, based upon transportation, that we do end up picking out. I think we have to, as, as a school district and as a community, look for opportunities to continue to sustain our numbers and our programs for our kids in Sonopee. And I think this is really a good way for, for you as a school board and us as a community to say, hey, we're doing our best to continue to allow kids and get kids into our school districts that are allowing us to collect revenue, that are not hitting our tipping point and costing us more money. And we talked about whether it's a one-year, two-year, or three-year agreement, so that we're not tied down for ten years, we're not tied down for five years, and sort of having some out causes in there as well. I, I do see it as a win-win. I don't see this as putting us in any sort of hole, in, in, in even looking over the next four years. So just to be clear, I think I said this last, last month, but four, five, three, and two are the numbers in there, the classes, fourth to kindergarten. So they don't have like a fifty-five comment or a thirty-five comment. And we talked about, you know, if you had twenty-five seniors, or twenty-five juniors right now that were out of placement, I might not be able to absorb twenty-five juniors, or maybe I could, or maybe I could absorb twenty-five sixth graders. And so, we'd have to be able to have some flexibility there. They weren't concerned about that, they don't, again, they don't feel that their fifty kids, because Sonopee became an anchor school, are gonna leave their programs they're in right now and come back here. Again, I think it's something that, if we can work out the details, if we can feel comfortable about going into this and maintaining that tipping point, maintaining the level of services that we provide for our kids, note over extending ourselves in the level of services that we may need to provide, ensuring that those services that we provide are paid for. I think we continue to, I don't think we're gonna see a huge increase, right now we have thirteen kids from, from Croydon. Do I think we see half a dozen more maybe if we, we put this in a place, maybe, I don't know?
So what's the, what's, so the point of benefit to having multiple anchor schools is? I guess I don't quite understand multiple anchor schools.
So they like that allows more choice, where the kids don't have to apply one.
Oh, I see, so we now, like, now I...
The apply.
So the, the application's done. So now we're an anchor school, we have to take their kids no matter what?
If, if, if the child decided, so, again, because they have so many, if we were their only anchor school, I'd have some reservation.
Right.
Because they have so many, those kids, those families still have to make a decision on where they're going.
They're still having to pay for any special services.
And they're still paying.
But, that's, that's the downfall to the whole thing, is that we don't, we lose that kind of ability to...
We, our pick and choose potentially goes away.
Right.
With, with the understanding that it's all kids coming in our schools, we have expectations, both behavioral and academic. Academic, we have to deal with, but behavioral, we obviously have processes in place, so if things need to happen, then they need to happen. And that happens for a Sonopee student or a tuition student right now.
Or are we an anchor school for any other district, or this will be our first one?
This will be our first. And I, and, and again, if we look at, truly look at our numbers, and it was unfortunate, it was quoted in the paper the other day, that a resident said we had three hundred kids in our school. And it was at the town hall, at the Slackness meeting, and I'm like, we don't. We have three hundred fifty kids plus preschool, and we do have fifty tuition kids right now, forty-seven tuition kids. Right, so our number's four hundred, whatever that, like, is four hundred right now. But if our population is going to potentially continue to stabilize, we should look to ensure that we can offer a level of programs and opportunities for our kids in Sonopee. And one of the ways we can do that is ensuring we have a continued flow of kids that bring revenue in to help offset our budget. So we predicted thirty-two cents, I think, last year, based upon what we think we're gonna be giving back. That thirty-two cents could be backed down to like twenty cents. And I think that's, we have to continue to sell, kids are, kids coming to our district, whether they're tuition kids or they're anchor school kids, it's revenue coming in to help maintain what we have for the children we have in this community.
Yeah, I just needed to understand what the benefit of all that is.
It's, it's just the, I get the comment if I want to.
And, and actually, it could be potential of helping with busing.
So that was, that was an interesting conversation, because if you, if you ever asked us for a bus, if you said you had, you know, ten kids, but they don't, because they don't really have that cohesiveness, I guess, because once their kids are gone, their kids kind of just go, right?
Well, they're only there for a short period.
Yeah, and you're there for five years, and then away you go. And so they don't, didn't really have a, an idea of really what that looked like. They did a survey, and they said, you know, if Sonopee was an opportunity, would you consider it? And we were definitely high on the list, but I don't see a whole lot of kids in high school, sophomore, junior, senior, high school, jumping out of a high school to transfer to, to transfer to a high school. No, you might get a sixth grader, or a seventh grader, or an eighth grader that's gonna jump out of, you know, or a kid coming out of Mount Royal and saying, hey, I'd like to go to high school in Sonopee instead of finishing up in Mount Royal. So they don't really know what that looks like. They're gonna send me some data on their classes right now, K through twelve, so I can see all the numbers, get a better understanding where some of those kids are. And we may have asked them to, to do some sort of, you know, quick sort of way, a quick anecdote, like, if Sonopee became an anchor school, would you go? So that we have at least some indication of what potentially might be.
Right.
Seems like long-term will probably be something that incrementally grows, right? Because you're more likely to get the younger kids, and once they start in the district, they're gonna continue, as opposed to the ones that are gonna wanna stay where they started, especially with older kids.
Right.
I'd be interested in knowing, like, from a cost perspective, the busing piece? Like, I, I know that that's an incentive, but like, what is the estimated cost of running a bus relative to the number of kids that we could expect? Because any, you know, junior and senior year, once they drive, they're gonna drive themselves, so they're not riding a bus no matter what, even futuristically. And then, you know, depending on that cost assessment, is the tuition amount that we set, as we set it, is that still appropriate, or should we look at a slight bump? Because we're gonna incur cost also to run that bus out there every day.
So, so my, I agree with you. Well, I was thinking, I'm gonna have Brendan take a look at it, but I was gonna have her set a limit on, again, the cost of the bus, but then, we may just be charging them for the bus by itself. So we'll leave tuition alone and say, okay, if you have seven kids, you know, we can do this, and this is how much this, this run's gonna be. If you have two kids, you know, we're either not gonna do the run, because it's not cost benefit to do the run for us. And it's not cost benefits for the run for you either. So I, I was thinking maybe we look at just charging them completely separate for the potential run.
For a run.
For a run, maybe, right? Now, if Brendan's...
That's the safest route.
Yeah, and Brendan tells me, Russ, listen, I got the, I got a bus, it's got twenty kids on it, it's got sixty seats, it's four miles down the road, I got it. Okay, maybe, maybe that's okay, but she's gonna have some numbers for us to be able to make that determination.
One other spot that just jumped up is right at the store, coming down through Cash Street and opening. So the bus is already heading up to the hill, top of the hill, so. We brought, I discussed that about finding out from their highway department about snow and keeping open and stuff like that, that I thought they should also talk to.
I guess part of that is also drivers too, and that's part of what she's gonna look into, I guess, because it seems like at times we're a bit thin, especially, you know, with sports and after school, and like, right now, all sorts of crazy, you know, rescheduling is going on for the end of the ball season. So, you know, is, you know, are there gonna be enough drivers?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the ideal would be, again, we have a seventy-one passenger bus, and it happens to be on that route that's going out of North Road. But that route picks up fifty-seven kids, and so there's, there's X seats available on that bus. And do, how, is it beneficial for us to then be able to go out, again, have them load, come in and pick up that run out of North Road, for seven, eight kids, whatever it is? I, I, I think if we have to get to, because we talked about, hey, if you have twenty kids, maybe we're sending our small bus over, but if that's the case, then I'm gonna make them, you know, I'm gonna suggest that you're paying for that run, because we're now made a run for your kids to go from Croydon to Sonopee. I think it just really depends on the numbers, but we do, definitely do that analysis. Again, we'll, we'll bring more to you, but I think it's important that, I think it was a great conversation, one, they, they approached us. And I, I do think, as choice, as we have the benefactors of choice, we may wanna continue to think about if this works well. You know, there's a Goshen, there's a Lemster, there's a Unity, there are some other schools out there that, I think it's a good, good faith effort for the, for this board to show we're doing everything we can to continue to attract kids to our school district, to maintain what we have for the kids that are here in Sonopee, without deterring anything from it.
And we have to give you, I mean, we've talked dollars and cents, but you know, we're talking about kids, like, actual little people coming into our buildings, and how do we work to make sure we're integrating them into the Sonopee system? And it's hard to be new, and it's hard to come into a completely different huge environment, maybe, to what they're used to. So how do we make sure our buildings, what support can we give them to make sure those kiddos and families, not just the kids, but the adults in the situation, so they realize what it means to be a part of the Sonopee schools, I think is important? And we've talked about, you know, how do we get the community involved and, and making sure people understand what we stand for? And it's a great district, and...
I would just say I think the benefit of the kids we get in the fifth grade, it's before adolescence and all the judgments and, you know, self-confidence going down. They integrate very easily and very well. By the end of the first week, you wouldn't even know they hadn't been there the last five years.
I mean, I brought new kiddos in here, and it was a beautiful, easy experience. And, you know, there's just certain things that I think, I'm trying to think of an example, you know, you guys have a dodgeball tournament, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard. So, you know, is there some kind of like primer to this is what Sonopee means, you know? That can just, you know, and it doesn't have to be complicated, but I think you're right. I think you guys do a really nice job of making people feel welcome. And, you know, my kiddos will say, oh, that's so-and-so, they're from so-and-so. They don't call them tuition students, they just call them like, they live in wherever. And then we look at a map and figure out where that is. It doesn't seem to matter, except to your point, Scott, of sometimes they're like, man, they've got forty-five minutes home, and it's dark, and sports and all that, so.
Moving on to manifests, looking for a motion to approve the AP manifest and payroll manifest as written.
I'll make a motion to approve both the AP and the payroll manifests as they are written on the agenda.
As presented for the last.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda items for next week, I did like what Carrie had said, next meeting, I should say, and seeing if we could add in on that, to have the...
Cindy?
Cindy, counselor come in and talk to us about them.
So we'll probably have a, I'm having some, some summer project potentially, and we'll bring Cindy in, and we'll continue the conversation with that employee, and the girls might come our way.
At this time, I'm going to request to go into the non-public session for discussion of matters covered under RS A ninety-one dash eight three. A roll call to go in? Do we have to do a roll call or go in for it?
Uh, yes, if the, do a roll call vote, you need a motion to go in?
Looking for a motion to go in, to the non-public.
Is a motion to go in the non-public?
Yes.
Yes for me, Carrie?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And Amanda?